Good evening, welcome everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please take the role?
Ms. Alfonja?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry? Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here. Let the record show that all our board members are present tonight. Our next part of the agenda is adoption of the agenda itself. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Cherry and I believe the second was from Mr. Samuels?
Dr. Mason.
Dr. Mason, okay. Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, would you call the vote?
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, the motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. It consists of action or item 2.01, the Personnel Report Number 20-12, 2.02, minutes of the school board meeting of August 19th, 2020, and 2.03, school board consent to receipt of donations September 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented, Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Samuels and a second from Dr. Woodhouse. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, the motion carries. We now move on to superintendent and staff reports. I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Smith. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the school board. Good evening. We'll start with our return to school plan update. That will be provided and presented by Dr. John Cagiano, who serves as our Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Dr. Cagiano, please.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Chairman Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, members of the board, Dr. Smith. During the last board meeting, we shared information with the board in reference to return to school plan updates and we're back before you this evening to provide some additional updates since we last had the opportunity to speak. The last presentation, we began by sharing some slides that you'll see here at the beginning of this presentation and updates around PPE as well as technology updates. This particular slide, which we shared last time, no new changes here. So we still are on target for next week for the cloth face masks to arrive with the school logo. In reference to the other slide with PPE that we shared in the previous presentation, the only update here, everything else had arrived. We were waiting on the desk shields for schools and as of this week, those have arrived. Moving on to technology, we're pleased to share with the board that based on our current Chromebook supply, we're in a position to provide students in pre-K through 12 with devices to begin the school year. As shared with the board not too long ago, we thought perhaps we might need to look for, for example, using iPads to distribute until, to pre-K students until ample Chromebooks arrive. But we are in a position now to supply Chromebooks to all students, grades pre-K through 12. Some additional updates in reference to technology. Last time we shared with you this slide here. Since then, both orders of Chromebooks have been shipped that were still outstanding. So we're pleased to report that. You know, we do have, this week, we've seen an uptick. I was sharing with Dr. Smith not too long ago and the number of students who are in secondary schools who realize that, you know, school is starting next week and let me make sure my Chromebook is working. And some of those students have run into issues. So our folks in the technology department have been busy either replacing or repairing those. And so it'll be nice to have some additional Chromebooks on hand in the very near future. Also in reference to technology, we wanted to share with you that some of the ancillary devices that we're using to support instruction and teaching and learning, those have all arrived. So those have arrived ahead of schedule. The video cams, I think, had arrived since in between last board meeting and today's meeting. And then today I was informed that the other, the tablets and the Logitech cameras have also arrived. So we're in a good position with technology equipment. Internet connectivity, if you looked at, and I know you all did, the presentation that was posted over the weekend, you'll see these numbers have been revised as of this evening, as of 5:00 PM this evening. So Ms. Bowers has posted a revised presentation on the school board website in Board Docs. And so it does reflect this current data here. So again, as you're aware, we surveyed parents at the end of June and we did so again during the month of July. And the expectation really, what we're looking for is a 100% response rate. And so as of today, we have 71% of our students who've responded. So of the 19,105, 13,537 have responded. Of those who've responded, 98% of them have indicated that they have high-speed internet access. So our technology folks have worked diligently with the 235 individuals and families who've indicated they have not had internet service and that is going very well. So the next board meeting will provide an update on that particular population. Again, as of today, those are 235 students who indicated they did not have high-speed internet access. So, you know, what are we doing about the other 29%? We continue to reach out to families daily. We have teams at the schools who are making phone calls. We were meeting with teachers all throughout the end of last week and this week. And even we know that, for example, as a third grade teacher, the personal relationship they had with the child last year. And so how can they help out the student who's on the fourth grade list this year, who we know we don't have internet connectivity with? So we're trying to be creative in reaching out to those families. Also tomorrow, a robocall again will go out to the 29% of students and those families who we've not heard from yet, just as a reminder. And now what's happened because of Parent Portal has opened, parents can actually do that and as far as submitting that information in the portal or they can simply, again, call the school. So we'll be reminding parents of that. And we'll continue to provide the board an update on those, on those numbers. Just so you know, I don't have the numbers in here, but I'll share with you that of the 13,537, 7,555 parents indicated that should we move to a traditional in-person learning setting? And let's say, for example, in the second nine weeks, that they would wish to remain in a 100% virtual setting when that represents approximately 56% of those survey respondents. So of those who've shared data with us, over half of them have indicated thus far that they would like to remain in a virtual setting regardless of the direction that the division takes the second nine weeks. So some Chromebook distributions and virtual open houses. If you were to go to the division's website, home website to include the virtual up-to-date, virtual learning school website, you'll see this icon here and parents can simply click on that logo there where it says click here to see their school's respective virtual open houses. So that information is available. And then we also, again, took a systems approach to distributing tools to include Chromebooks and other supplies that we've asked students and families to pick up. And so we just wanted to share with parents who are viewing this evening and then perhaps viewing this presentation afterwards that if you visit our website, this flyer is located at the top right of our homepage for some additional details. At this time, Ms. Ruth, I'll go ahead and turn the presentation over to Ms. Ruth to discuss the childcare options. And if Ms. Ruth is not with us, I'll go ahead and move on with the slide here. So childcare options as a member of the... Oh, are you there, Ms. Ruth?
I am, I'm sorry. I was talking away and I was on mute. I'm so sorry. So good evening. And before I share with you the actual options that we are offering to our employees, I did want to share with you a little bit of the data that we received on the... We've sent out two surveys as they related to childcare. The first survey was the survey we sent out to employees in July about the return to work. And we had over 2,800 responses, so fabulous response rate. 345 or 12% of the employees indicated that childcare might present an obstacle for them returning to the workplace. Those employees all received a second survey. And in that survey, approximately 32% of the employees indicated they would like to be able to bring their students with them to work. And 63% indicated that they would like to be able to remain at home. And then we had only 3.7 or actually nine employees who indicated that they would feel comfortable in having their child in a community-based childcare setting. So based on the feedback that we received, we have extended the following options to our employees. Teachers absolutely may bring their children with them between the ages of five and 12 to the classroom. We are also depending upon the work location and the job responsibilities for our other employees. They are also potentially able to bring their children with them to work. Obviously, there are some settings where it wouldn't be safe. So that's on a case-by-case basis. We also have administrators who are working with the employees to create flexible schedules. For instance, we've got several families where both mom and dad are employees of Hampton City Schools. So we've got principals working with each other to make sure that both mom and dad can be in their classrooms and students and their children be taken care of. So we've got administrators working together with employees to create flexible schedules. On a case-by-case basis, there are some employees who are working 100% from home. In most of those cases, we've got some sort of medical documentation. And then we have also provided our employees with information on community-based childcare options. And we will continue to update that as updates become available.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Ruth. So student schedules, looking at student schedules in grades pre-K through 5, those families have been receiving letters in the mail with details regarding not only their virtual open houses, but the specific Zoom URL that students will need to log on that first day of school. Also, which I think is a great strategy at the elementary level, looking at that second bullet there. Every teacher has been tasked with checking in one-on-one with families and students prior to the start of the first day of school. So holding a Zoom meeting, for example, if I'm a teacher with 24 students, I will have 24 Zoom meetings with each of the families and students prior to the first day of school, which I think is a great way to transition and to begin to build relationships with families. At the secondary level, using technology, so as of this morning, parents were able to log into the parent portal, students able to log into the student portal, and they could view their schedules. One of the things we did this year was at the top of what they see as their homepage, we inserted a link of a Google Doc. And as a parent, if I were to click on that Google Doc and the link is down here at the bottom of this screen here, it would take me to a list of all the schools in Hampton by level, elementary, middle, and high. And I can see the beginning and start times, beginning and end times for the day and the blocks for my respective school. Also, at the secondary level, when I log in, this is what it looks like. And here's that URL I was mentioning here. The only thing that Power School does not provide students and families as well as this link here would be the actual Zoom URL that I need. So again, in a much better position to take a systems approach as a division compared to March 13th, we have a list of teacher expectations in the division, which I'll share in just a minute. And one of those expectations is certainly to use Google Classroom. And taking systems approach, we've asked all of our teachers, regardless of the level, elementary, middle, and high, this is a screenshot from Google Classroom and I'm drilled down to the classwork tab. And what we're doing is pinning at the top, so it just remains at the top, the URL for the specific course. And so students would receive an email from the teacher prior to the first day of school inviting them to join the Google Classroom. When they join the Google Classroom, they'll be instructed to access the URL here. And that's the URL they'll use for their first day of class at the secondary level for grades 6 through 12. Something else in meeting with focus groups of parents and surveys stakeholders during the spring and throughout the summer, one request we heard from students, really staff and parents, was what are strategies to help students and families to remain organized throughout? And so as a part of our expectation and part of the training this summer, all teachers are expected to use Google Classroom, of course, to post assignments. And when you do that a certain way in Google Classroom, it auto-populates the Google Calendar for students. The nice thing about the calendar is it states the second bullet there. We're actually able to share that with parents. And so as a parent, I can simply log on to Google Calendar. I can see all the assignments, let's say for this week or this month for my student. I simply click on the assignment. It gives me not only the Zoom URL for my student here, but it actually sees, I see the Google Classroom assignment link here. So it's a great way to keep not only students organized, but parents to stay on top of students to be able to support them at home. And, you know, we've had over 1,000 parents trained last week. We have 800 more signed up for a session tomorrow. And this is one of the features we've been going over with parents and getting rave reviews from stakeholders. So teacher observations, you know, depending how long we are in a virtual setting, observations still need to occur as well as just from a monitoring standpoint. So this is just a sample, a rough draft of a couple of weeks ago, Phoebus began working on their master Zoom schedule. And all schools have similar schedules to this. And you can see here in this schedule what I'm looking at. This is day one. So at the high school level, middle school level, we're blocking, right? So a day one, a day two, we're going to have on Mondays and Wednesdays will be days one, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, day two. So in this case, I'm looking at a Monday-Wednesday schedule for all the teachers in the building at Phoebus. And if you notice, I've highlighted the links here. And so what'll happen, if I were to reload this schedule here, I would see all of these classes would have hyperlinks. So if I'm an assistant principal, a principal, even a counselor for that matter, and I wanted to pop into this class at 10:15, Mr. Bain's class, World History 2, all I need to do is simply click on that URL and I wait for Mr. Bain to admit me. What we've also shared with teachers, there is an approved administrator list of Zoom observers. And so there are curriculum leaders, for example, teacher specialists. They have access to these master schedules as well. And we shared with teachers to expect them to be popping in from time to time as well. I mentioned the parent workshops, a great turnout for parent workshops. We've had, the first was a series of nine workshops and those conclude tomorrow. I'll share with parents in just a minute how you can find out more information about upcoming workshops that we're getting ready to post. So again, we've got 800 parents, a little over 800 signed up for tomorrow. And we're walking them through those tools that their students will be expected to use and what role they can play from a support standpoint in the home. Again, staying with that theme of systems approach, for the last five years, we have held what are called Understanding by Design Pre-Service Professional Learning Opportunities for all teachers. And so it's a mandatory training session where our teams get in front of all faculty members and they hear the same message. For this year's presentation, again, as Dr. Smith has shared with you all, that climate, that pyramid of support is really, if you were to divide that in half, half culture, climate, half teaching and learning. And so sticking with that theme, Heather Peterson shared with teachers and the presentation is here, if you wanted to take a look in depth. Access available to all. She shared with teachers about 20 minutes, you know, strategies as far as starting the year off on the right foot, social emotional learning toolkit that they can use. And what we shared with teachers is in some divisions, social emotional learning is a program. And so you press pause it, the 20 minutes into your lesson, take 10 minutes out for social and emotional learning and pick back up with your content afterwards. What we've said is one is not more important than the other. And so we're asking teachers, again, we've embedded in our curriculum, we're asking teachers to embed it and weave it throughout their lessons. So Heather's presentation, about 25, 30 minutes. And then members of CIA team, we had a presentation as well. And you'll see the subbullets here of what we walked through. So I know Tiffany Hardy is joining us this evening. We shared some highlights of a document that she put together with a team of folks. So a 12-page document, Specific Guidelines for Student Attendance in a Virtual Learning. So we shared with teachers some expectations there. We shared with teachers, because this was some feedback from stakeholders over the summer as well, what are expectations around cameras from the division, on or off? Or when is it appropriate to turn them off? And so we walk through that and this link will take you to the division's expectations around cameras. And then, as I mentioned, these virtual learning teacher expectations or agreements about a five-page document of things that we're expecting as a division of teachers working in a virtual learning setting. We also talked about Friday and we brainstormed, what will the criteria look like at your school, at your level, your course as far as inviting students to Friday? And we shared some points to ponder there. We talked about those vulnerable student populations, particularly students with disabilities and English language learners and making the most of time on Fridays with them as well. We also used some of the CARES Act funds over the summer to pay some teachers to create some phenomenal lessons. And it was a very rigorous vetting process. We had two approval places, two approval processes in place where curriculum leaders as well as digital learning specialists approved those. So in K through 8, we've got sample lessons, for example, in English Language Arts and Mathematics for all of those grade levels, all teachers, and a lot of positive feedback there. And then lastly, both Heather and Peterson talked about it and we talked about it in our presentation. Again, just the importance of reminding folks to assume positive intent and grace, particularly as we begin the school year in a virtual setting. State accreditation and some updates there. Of course, it's always nice to share that slide, that graphic on the right. We certainly are still maintaining 100% accreditation of schools without the conditions. So as you all, as a board is well aware, and this is primarily for the community, when the state comes out at the end of September, early October and announces accreditation ratings, you'll see accreditation waived. Those ratings for this school year, the ratings for, that come out the 2021 school year are actually based on last year's data. And so what the state has said in the first bullet already and the Department of Education, the board has approved this at that level, is that they've waived state accreditation for 2122. And of course, that means that this year, if we do administer SOL tests, divisions are not being held accountable from an accountability standpoint that it will say at the beginning of next year, end of September, early October, accreditation waived based on this year's data. So VDOE does remain as it indicates in the second bullet there in communication with the U.S. Department of Education regarding whether we're going to administer SOL tests or not. So what we shared with teachers last week and this week is that if the federal government approves that request and there's a possibility, we will forego SOL testing this year altogether. If the federal government does not approve that, then what we'll do is go ahead and administer the test. And we shared with teachers that really the results of those tests would be primarily used to inform revisions to curriculum next summer. Also, just so the board knows, we'll be excited to share where we're continuing to trend as far as graduation updates, graduation rates, excuse me. We anticipate those to be released on September 30th. Dr. Smith, the meeting with administrators throughout the summer and executive directors as well. We have not changed expectations regarding student achievement outcomes and these remain as important as they were when they first came about approximately five years ago. And so all schools, again, will remain fully accredited without conditions. That's the expectation. We're continuing to grow readers and we know that third grade is a gatekeeper for literacy. And so 95% of third graders will read on grade level as measured by that Hampton City Schools Lexile criteria. We're still working to explore at least two career pathways for middle school students prior to entering ninth grade. Each middle school student, again, involved in at least one extracurricular activity with a mentorship component. 95% of each graduating class will graduate on time with a diploma and credentials that verify they are prepared to succeed in the economy and the community. And lastly, the division's SAT or ACT composite score in reading and math will be at the state or national average. And then all schools will meet the division's established safe and nurturing learning environment criteria and goals. So the last thing I'd like to share with you this evening is that we continue to provide updates to the return to school plan website and would certainly ask parents to continue to take a look at that. So I'm pulling that up on the screen here, just so folks at home can see. I'm logged on now to the Hampton City Schools website. Here's the graphic I mentioned earlier, where as a parent, I can click here to launch the virtual open house dates right there. Here's the icon that will launch the return to school plan website. So when I click on that website, you'll notice if you haven't been to it a while, there are a few updates. So for example, if I were to scroll down here, I see some of the virtual learning workshops for parents. So you see the last one for right now is tomorrow. When we update that at the beginning and next week, this information will change here. The internet connectivity piece, I mentioned that. And here is the phone number to call. However, I wanted to share with parents that the fastest way, if you don't have internet access and you want to apply for that Cox Connect Compete program, if you click on this link here, or if someone clicks on this link for you and downloads this phone, this form, the first step is to fill out this one-page form and submit that to the school and then we take it from there. So once you've submitted that form, we begin working with Cox on your behalf. And that is the quickest way to begin the application for internet access. Some additional information on this website, we've gotten lots of questions from parents in reference to New Horizons. And so we've updated the website here. So you see, there's an FAQ section dedicated strictly to New Horizons. We have updated some information in reference to the school meal programs that'll now be going through. So there's an FAQ here as well that'll now be going through December 31st, 2020. We have published a video of a version of the virtual learning workshops that have been taking place with parents. So if someone just wanted to peruse that on their own time, you'll find that on this website. And then the health and healthy and safe return to school communication guidance, there's an in-depth document that is posted on here that provides a lot of information that when we do return to an in-person learning setting, that these are certainly some of the guidelines, strategies, mitigations that will be in place. So at this time, this does conclude this presentation. I'll go ahead and keep the screen share up. I'll go back to this slide presentation. And Mr. Kilgore, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to address any questions from the board at this time.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cagiano and Ms. Ruth. Do we have any questions from board members? I have to speak up. I'm scrolling down to look at your faces. All right. No comments, questions? All right. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Cagiano. That was a great update. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Kilgore? You have one from Ms. Tina Banks Gray. And just one up, yes.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Yes, I just wanted to give accolades to Dr. Cagiano and his team for the parent workshop series. That's absolutely amazing to have close to 1,200 parents participate in that particular series and it's growing just to help with student, the student support and learning. I really just, I'm really excited to see that format and hats off to you and your team. Thank you.
We appreciate that feedback. And one thing I didn't share, Ms. Banks Gray, and I know you're aware of this, on that return to school website, as a parent, if I wanted to scroll down here to this Chromebook zone, there are lots of links here on videos that I can watch that can help me help my child.
I did have one question. I'm not sure if it's you, Dr. Cagiano, or Ms. Ruth, but had we had any discussion about evening classes or evening virtual school? I had heard about other divisions talking about that. I don't understand how that would work logistically, but I wanted to know if we had looked at anything like that.
And I can respond, Mr. Kilgore. I know that, as a matter of fact, a conversation with Dr. Owens today. So we're working with families on a case-by-case basis to address specific needs, if that exists.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. I will turn it back over to you, Dr. Smith, for the next report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kilgore. At this time, our summer learning, Dr. Nita Owens, one of our executive directors for school leadership, will provide the lead as it relates to the summer learning and all of the great things that occurred this summer and within the realm of virtual learning. But the experiences, the student experiences were exceptional. And I think you'll certainly feel and experience that through the summer learning presentation. So there are a number of presenters. But I'll turn it over at this time to Dr. Nita Owens, our executive director for school leadership. Dr. Owens certainly provides leadership at the elementary and our pre-K through eight schools as well. Dr. Owens?
Good evening, Chair Kilgore.
Good evening Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair Dr. Woodhouse, members of the board, Dr. Smith, and our Hampton community. This evening, you will have the opportunity to hear from an extraordinary group of individuals who worked collaboratively together to design a comprehensive virtual summer learning program for our students to provide them, uh, additional assistance in the areas of reading, writing, uh, math, and through extended learning opportunities through stream, they got to experience supports in science, technology, uh, reading, redirection, uh, engineering, arts, and math. We know it said that the comfort zone is the enemy to creativity. Well, this group of individuals stepped out, well, rather they jumped out of the comfort zone and they reimagined what teaching and learning could really look like in a virtual setting. So Dr. Haynes and I would really just like to take this opportunity to thank the curriculum leaders, the program coordinators, our site coordinators, and especially our teachers for the outstanding job that they did with this summer program despite COVID disrupting what was once our traditional summer learning program. And also for setting the stage for us to be able to begin a virtual learning session with our students to open up the school year. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mrs. Lockett, she shared her screen, and Heather Goode will begin the presentation as she shares highlights from the elementary program, followed by the middle, the high, and stream. Ms. Goode?
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Owens. Good evening, Dr. Smith, Mr. Kilgore, distinguished school board members and Hampton community. Tonight, I will provide an overview of the Elementary Virtual Summer Learning Academy. Next slide, please. Coordinators Lisa White and Mindy Long directed the virtual academies. They oversaw six K through five learning academies. Ms. Lakeisha Ames led Carey. Ms. Robin Crump led Langley, which also housed our English language learners. I led the Cooper site. Dr. Latonya Harris led Machin. Ms. Jasmine Royal led Armstrong and Ms. Jessica White led Aberdeen. We are all thankful for the leadership opportunity given to us this summer. Next slide, please. The Elementary Virtual Learning Academy is a six-week structured program to support reading intervention in grades K through five. Our fifth graders were also given support in math interventions. Students in grades K through 12, I'm sorry, K through two were identified through the Language Arts Department using current PALS data. Students in grades three through five were offered interventions based on teacher recommendations and RTI data. Next slide, please. Our students attended the Virtual Learning Academies Monday through Thursday from 9:00 AM until noon with parent conferences and small groups held on Fridays. Each K through two classroom had a student-teacher ratio of no more than six to one. And each three through five classroom had a student-teacher ratio of 10 to one, affording our most at-risk students an opportunity for direct and explicit instruction. Next slide, please. Students in grade K through, in grades K through two received explicit small group instruction through the use of systematic instruction in phonics, phonological awareness, and sight words, or our SIPs program. Teachers were provided the systematic lessons which addressed opportunities for growth in phonics and decoding school skills. A first-grade teacher provided feedback saying that the structured lesson plans helped alleviate the stress that she felt as a first-year teacher. Next slide, please. Our kindergarten and first-grade students certainly excelled this summer. Of the students who were administered both the pre and post-test, 79% of our kindergarten students showed growth with an average gain of 23 points. And 76% of our first-grade students showed growth with an average of 15 points of gain in their decoding skills during our six-week program. Next slide. Thank you. Students in grades kindergarten through fifth were given whole group instruction using the Scholastic Lit Camp program. The Lit Camp program provides structured lessons which include an opening campfire to provide community-building, social, emotional skills. A read aloud with scripted stopping points to reinforce literacy skills such as fluency and comprehension. And a bring-it-to-life activity which provided the students with a fun way to bring the text to life. Next slide, please. Lit Camp also provided students with an independent reading time using the Literacy Pro- Program, which gave students access to hundreds of books on their identified reading levels. A first-grade teacher provided feedback on the Literacy Pro program saying that once we were able to use the Literacy Pro program, it was user-friendly and provided a lot of information that was great for tracking student progress. Next slide, please. The students worked hard and it absolutely shows in the gains that our students made in their six short weeks. As you can see, our students, of our students who were administered both the pre and post-test, um, I'm sorry, uh, out of our students who were given the pre and post-test, the reading mastery test, 56% of our second graders grew an average of 23 Lexile points. 70% of our third graders showed an average growth of 15 points. 58% of our fourth graders showed growth with an average of 58 points. And our fifth graders, and 56% of our fifth graders gained an average of 70 points. Next slide, please. In addition to language arts support, our fifth graders were also given specific math support during our six-week virtual academy. Students once again received explicit structured lessons which fully engaged students in learning. In addition to the engaging daily lessons teachers were provided, they were all, students were also given the opportunity to try our out-of-the-box lessons which increased rigor and gave students an opportunity to apply the skills they were learning in class. A fifth-grade student told his teacher that the out-of-the-box lessons were his favorite part of summer learning because it, because it was so much fun and it wasn't regular boring practice. Next slide, please. The Virtual Summer Academy was attended by 701 students who also participated in the Lit Camp this summer. Next, thank you. Each classroom this summer was a fun and engaging environment, as you can see through the smiles on both the students and the teacher's faces. At this time, I would like to introduce the middle school coordinators, Mr. James Jones and Ms. Kimberly Poole to share the information about their program.
Thank you, Ms. Goode. Good evening Board Chair, Mr. Kilgore, Vice Chair, Mr. Woodhouse, School Board Members, and Hampton Community. Mr. Jones and I are very pleased to have served as the virtual middle school summer learning coordinators this year. In summer school for our virtual learning for middle school, students enrolled in middle school virtual learning, uh, took language arts and math, language arts or math. So they could take just language arts if that was the need for the student. They could take just math if they needed that. They could take both if that was needed. We had 329 students that participated. 273 participated in math and 303 in language arts. The student-to-teacher ratio was 22 to one in language arts and 20 to one in math. Next slide, please. The middle school program was four days a week for 90 minutes. It was increased from four weeks to six weeks. Um, in previous years, students have had four weeks. Uh, this year, we gave them six weeks of, uh, intervention. It focused on content mastery of mathematics and language arts skills. Uh, out-of-the-box lessons, which Ms. Goode already addressed, the students loved them. They were real-world. They got to apply what they know to real-world world problems and it was interesting for them. So they were highly engaged. 75% of students participating in math, as measured by pre and post-tests, increased their content mastery, um, in the program over the six weeks. And you can see some examples there at the bottom of the out-of-the-box, mathematics problems that they had to solve. And they are in line with elementary school, but they include more rigor, uh, based on the needs, uh, the middle school student. Next slide, please. Um, and I'm going to introduce Mr. Jones to talk about the reading and writing skills, the language arts for middle school.
Good evening. As Mrs. Goode indicated and Mrs. Poole did, language arts, uh, reading and writing was utilized to enhance this summer. Uh, vertically aligned, very, very similar to what elementary utilized. Uh, logistically, I was set up for middle school 202020 format. A whole group and opportunities for independent and then reconvening and kind of looking at information together. Uh, totally aimed at improving reading and writing skills. Uh, very similar to elementary, the main tools and resources used rhymes with reason, uh, Scholastic Literacy Pro, and then Literacy Camp resources. Next slide, please. Language arts enhancing reading and writing. So rhymes with reason, the purpose there was utilized to aid uh, develop a vocabulary, making use of modern-day music and rhymes to increase engagement, especially at that middle school level. Uh, Lit Camp used to develop a communal setting, beginning, during, and after activities focused on daily skills, building those up. And Scholastic Literacy Pro was utilized primarily as a summative interactive assessment tool. Uh, was used to gather information relative to student reading Lexile. Next slide, please. Uh, average SOL scores for students invited to participate in language arts virtual summer learning was 385. 69% of those students participating in the summer learning program increased their Lexile reading level. Next slide, please. And, and looking at what middle school kids and teachers had to say about it. Uh, kids thought it was fun. Uh, they enjoyed doing the mystery things with math. Those out-of-the-box lessons, uh, were really big. Uh, they, they liked their teachers. It was nice to see some of their friends. So even though they came from across the district, they came together, they enjoyed being with their peers. Uh, what teachers had to say, uh, the HCS shareable templates were very helpful. Everything being laid out assisted a lot. So kudos to Dr. Birdwright and Dr. Sito in assisting in preparing those resources. Uh, supportive and effective communication from the administration. Uh, we did our best, Mrs. Poole and I, even though we were virtual, uh, we worked from our respective buildings and we communicated with one another via text, via phone, uh, whatever we needed to do to ensure we had kids in class as best we could and teachers were provided ample resources. Uh, the chat box, a resource utilized, uh, screen sharing, surveys, student polls, just different things utilized to keep students engaged. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Ms. Jennifer Lockett and Ms. Carla Ma.
Hi, good evening. Uh, Carla Ma and myself have the honor of presenting our high school summer program. And, um, our high schools are not new to virtual learning at all. Um, and we've been offering this option for several years since about 2012, 100% virtual. And over the years, our students have earned thousands of high school credits and have serviced thousands of students along the way. Um, for those wanting to get ahead as, as well as those recovering credits, we've been able to, um, accommodate for students that came from neighboring districts as well as, um, out of state, uh, with our program. Um, it's also satisfied several situations to help students succeed. We definitely couldn't do this without our amazing teachers who you will see sprinkled through the presentation. Hey, um, our registration process was online and for the very first time, we were able to utilize an online payment process. So families didn't need to come to the building to pay for classes. We offered a virtual family orientation where we demonstrated how a student course looked, best ways that parents could support their children and also discuss expectations and agreements that we had um, along the way, as far as, uh, taking advantage of the tools that were built into the online learning management system and also help them with time management and successful completion. Our teachers must be endorsed in the content area that they teach and were trained on Edgenuity, which was our online platform. They worked tirelessly through Zoom meetings, text messages, and phone conversations throughout the summer to motivate and assist with content. We employed, uh, 32 teachers from all four high schools, a couple of middle schools, as well as our alternative learning center to satisfy our needs this summer. This slide shows the courses that we, uh, offered this summer and, uh, we are happy to expand our selection this year by adding environmental science as well as, um, PE 10. And several rising ninth graders often take their help in PE, uh, online, so they don't have to take it in school. Uh, we have several of those that do that every single year. And Econ and Personal Finance is another one that several rising ninth graders take to get a few credits under their belt before they enter high school.
Good evening. As Ms. Lockett mentioned, we have been offering summer school for high school credit in the virtual setting for a number of years. This slide provides the trends for student enrollment and the number of semester credits earned. Students could enroll to recover part of a course, parts of two different courses, or a full course. So that is why we share the data in terms of semester credits earned as opposed to credits earned. Our enrollment numbers, uh, for this year are a bit lower than we've had in, uh, 2019. You can see we had 88 students enrolled. We believe the lower enrollment numbers are due to, one, students having multiple opportunities now to receive support and recover at the nine weeks than they had in previous years. And two, students who received incompletes during this last nine weeks are able to use the first nine weeks of this school year to complete their courses, removing the need to pay for summer school and allowing them to remain on track for graduation. The students enrolled, no, go back to it. The students enrolled were mainly those who had been unsuccessful in a course during a previous school year and they needed that credit for promotion and those who wanted to get ahead and make room in their course schedule to take a global elective. Next slide, please. Again, we had a total of 88 students this summer. Uh, 64 semester credits were being taken for recovery and 64 semester credits were being taken for initial credit. As always, English is our most popular course for credit recovery as promotion hinges on the successful completion of this course. Social Studies and Economics and Personal Finance were our most initial credit courses. And I'd like to, um, also share with you that we had six students take a dual enrollment economics and personal finance course through Long Word University. Um, all of those were successful and received a passing grade for that dual enrollment course. They passed their industry certification test and they all earned dual enrollment credit. Next slide. Usually, students who complete an end-of-course course in summer school have the opportunity to take the end-of-course standards of learning test to earn the verified credit needed for graduation. This summer, end-of-course testing was not an option for our students. However, the state granted the opportunity for students who met criteria to earn a locally awarded verified credit. For our students in summer school, their criteria was that they be enrolled in a course this summer and pass the course, demonstrating mastery of the standards, competencies, and objectives of the entire course. Not every student enrolled in a summer school course needed a verified credit in the course being taken. However, every student who needed a verified credit earned a locally awarded verified credit, allowing them to remain on target for on-time graduation. So you can see from this slide, we had a total of 29 students who needed that verified credit and earned, earned the locally awarded verified credit in the various courses as indicated on the slide. Next slide.
As far as needed, um, this slide is dedicated to, um, the grit and determination of our 50 summer graduates. Uh, we celebrate their successes and are grateful to the high school administrative teams, graduation specialists, and graduation facilitators uh, who never let them quit, motivated and cheered them on to close out their high school chapter and open their book to the future. And I now have the honor of introducing Mr. Daryl Rogers and his team as they discuss the amazing opportunities our students had in the summer stream program.
Good evening Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair Dr. Woodhouse, Dr. Smith, and members of the board. I'm Daryl Rogers, the out-of-school time coordinator for Hampton City Schools. And joining me today, I have Latasha Brown Davis. I'm Darryl Rogers, the Out of School Time Coordinator for Hampton City Schools. And joining me today, I have Latasha Brown Davis, Shalimar Ackerman-Arms, and Megan Canny. Uh, this summer, we wanted to ensure that Twenty First Century students still have the opportunity to participate uh in our summer program. So uh, working with other departments, we were able to collaborate and virtually uh develop a summer stream program. Uh, next slide, please. And Stream stands for Science, Technology, Recreation, Redirection, Engineering, and Math. It's a holistic program and approach uh that the students uh really uh tend to uh grow in and enjoy. Next slide. So this summer, um, the virtual program consists of nine schools, six elementary, and three middle. Uh, we had five hundred students that participated in the virtual stream program and we capped uh each school at sixty students per school. We also had eighty-six uh staff members that also uh participated and worked within the program. Ranging from um coordinators to curriculum writers um and parent liaisons. Next slide, please. The virtual stream program ran from July sixth through August sixth from twelve thirty to two thirty. There were a total of six subject areas um that was, that was included, but they took three classes each day. Uh, the core subject areas were Language Arts, Math, and Science. Resource subjects were Art, Flying Classroom, and Sports Science. We also um worked with Colman and the uh counselors for Hampton City Schools to provide a social and emotional learning component that you hear a little bit about. In a few minutes on the next slide, as well as virtual field trips for our students. Next slide.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, members of our community. As Mr. Rogers mentioned, we'd offered an exceptional academic enrichment opportunity this summer. Coordinators sorted and packed over four hundred fifty s- student material bags filled with time-tested favorites. Paper, pencils, and crayons, along with some up-and-coming materials that were specifically designed to shape and mold the minds of our summer session attendees. That would be. Uh, vegetable oil, toilet paper rolls, Q-tips, and Alka-Seltzer. I'll let you use your imagination with that one. To ensure everyone's safety and to be in compliance with the state orders, over the course of five days, coordinators wore masks and gloves. And practiced social distancing while using a drive-through plan for distributing student materials and Chromebooks. Please proceed to the next slide. Some of our families and students may have felt increased stress and isolation as, as they remained home during the ongoing coronavirus outbreak. With schools and other organizations temporarily closed, many of those systems put in place to be of benefit to our younger generation were temporarily lost. On top of that loss of support, many families were now dealing with frustrations related to economic stability. Job loss, health concerns, and other stressors that usually impact students directly and indirectly. Working with Hampton City Schools Director of Student Development and Counseling, Ms. Carla Mann. Nine professional school counselors were hired to assist with the social emotional impact our students were facing since school closures. Stephanie Lewis created the lessons we utilized this summer that addressed topics ranging from COVID nineteen to social distancing. Race, equality, activism, communication, and respect. The counselors positively impacted the social emotional element of our program and it was a pleasure having the creme of the creme of their profession. Assist with helping us build up our children. One of our parents um wrote in and they were, like, most of our parents were just so excited about the way the program was run this summer. Um, so this is one comment from one of our parents. Thank you to you and. And your staff. My niece was excited each day to attend Twenty First Century. She enjoyed everything. Not, not only did she learn many new things, but it allowed her to see her friends. You all, all are great and I commend you for all you do. I appreciate it and I am in awe of you. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Ms. Shaliman, Shalimar Ackerman-Arms.
Good evening, Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Ms. Cherry and members of the school board. Um, during this time, we utilized Zoom and Google Classroom in order to disseminate our lessons. This really ensured that both teachers and students could easily access the curriculum. We had amazing curriculum writers put together engaging lessons with different videos and responses. So we wanted to give our staff a way to, to give this to students and we wanted to make it less stressful for our staff as well. So we utilized the training from the Innovation and Professional Learning Department to create our own Google Slide lessons for our teachers to use. These slides ensured that each site delivered the same curriculum within the time given. We also included brain breaks for our students so that between each subject, they could have just a little bit of time to decompress, maybe use the restroom, get a snack. Overall, our staff, students, and parents were highly satisfied with Zoom rating it a four point seven out of five. We want to thank our I T department for their support this summer. Specifically, parents noticed, noted that these platforms were great resources. Some of our younger students in the third and fourth grade could have utilized more practice with these platforms just to become more comfortable with, with learning them. Um, however, the engagement levels were so positive among our staff and students. Next slide, please. In regards to our curriculum satisfaction, overall, staff, students, and parents were satisfied with the curriculum. Most were rated between a four and a five on a five-point scale. Specifically, parents stated that their children were happy with the program and excited to join each day. Students particularly enjoyed art and sports science and asked for more time in those two activities. Specifically, one student was thankful because it gave her the opportunity to see her teacher before she goes off to high school. And at this time, I'm going to pass it along to Ms. Megan Canny.
Good evening, Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, board members, Hampton City School staff, and our community. Overall, we had a lot of satisfaction with the stream program. What we did was we created a survey that we sent out at the end of the program. That asked everybody who was involved, from counselors, teachers, coordinators, parents, even the students. What they thought about the program and how they thought it went. And overall, we had a really high satisfaction rating of four point seven, which made us feel really good. And we got a lot of positive feedback, like my peers have already shared. A lot of our students wrote in that they loved the program and they had so much fun. I know my students personally really loved doing all the science activities. They would actually try to keep doing their science uh activities. While they were supposed to be doing something else. So we had to work on that a little bit, but overall, we had a satisfaction rate of four point seven out of five. And that just showed us that even though we had a few bumps, the program overall went really well. We were able to learn and develop and keep things moving forward as we went through the program. Next slide, please. As part of our Twenty First Century Program, the community aspect is a really big piece. So we had Ms. Jasmine Royal, who did an excellent job with family engagement for us. She sent out weekly newsletters to our parents. She handled a class dojo that allowed us to pass out information, materials needed, and any kind of updates we wanted to send to our parents. And she also developed some amazing activities that our students could do at home with their families as a way for them all to learn together and have something fun to do. During the summertime. The last major thing we had was some community partners who were amazing. We were actually able to provide weekly attendance incentives for our students. Thanks to the owner of a local McDonald's and the Hampton Convention Center Visitor Bureau Director. We were able to provide incentive for students who attended all four days of session every week. They were able to be put in a drawing to win a prize, which they thought was really fun. Actually, I think my favorite moment this summer was telling a student that they had won the drawing. And he was so excited and so freaked out that he actually won it. And it could, like, his whole face brightened up and it, you could tell it made everybody's day. So we really, really want to reach out and thank those community partners for what they did, not only for our students, but also to help our staff in retaining the attendance numbers. At this time, I will pass off the presentation to the directors of the Tuskegee Airmen.
Hello again. Um, by, uh, Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, members of the board. And Dr. Smith, I'm Darryl, uh, Darryl Rogers again, Out of School Time Coordinator. And at this time, I will have Doc, uh, Dr. Richardson will be joining me. Uh, for presentation um of Tuskegee Airmen Drone Camp. Uh, this summer, Dr. Douglas of the Tidewater Chapter Tuskegee Airmen reached out to members of the Hampton City Schools. Executive team and asked if we would be able to provide students to participate in a drone camp. That was led by Tuskegee Airmen. And at this time, I will pass it to Dr. Richardson to explain the camp.
Next slide. Um, good evening. Um, I, I would like to say that thank you for, um, Mr. Uh, Mr. Rogers for allowing us to be a part of this. Uh, we got a phone call um about June from Dr. Douglas and he was doing a um pilot Tuskegee Airmen Drone Camp. For the Tidewater area and they were selecting twenty-five students. And when he called, um, he, um. Stressed that they would practice social, social distancing and the, and gloves and masks and whatnot, but. He um stressed that he can only accept six kids from Hampton. And I said, well, you got the wrong number calling for just six kids for, for us, because our kids are very involved. And so, um. Eventually, I got him to allow us to have more than six children. We got, um, twelve slots, um, out of the twenty-five. And so we were the, um, grade six to eight. It was from August eleventh through the fourteenth. Um, Hampton City Schools provided lunch for the students each day. Um, they were picked up by me and, um, delivered to the children. Um, and during the four days, they had a very, very um exceptional experience. Uh, with flying drones and also, um, having classes in the morning where they were taught the history of drones and the history of flight. Um, they had guest speakers from all over the community. Um, when I came in and actually sat down with them and taught them how to write essays. Effective essays for college entry exams. And so, um, they had a lot of wonderful experiences. And we also had the Hampton City Police Department, the F A A, the Fire Department, and some also military drones. The drones range in price from a three hundred to thirty thousand dollars. And so the kids really got, um, an experience. And as you can see in the pictures, uh, we have females and males and the females did exceptionally well. Um, next slide. Um, a big thank you to Mr. Barclay, our principal, for allowing our students to participate. Also, Ms. Forrest, um, who is the Director of Food Services, and Dr. Colonel Douglas. And as you can see, there's Hampton City, um, Police Department, uh, working with the kids. And the kids also, um, had to learn how to fly the drones. On simulators prior to going, um, and actually working with the, with the drone. So each child, um, got an opportunity to fly drones. Each day for about three hours. And so, um, they did it very, very well. Um, next slide. Um, these are the Tuskegee, Tuskegee Airmen, um, actually came out to visit the children and they each received, um, a bag. And a signed book and certificate. And, um, parents were asked to write statements, um, as they left. And one of our parents wrote, um, this has been an interesting summer with COVID nineteen and virtual schooling. Many children have had a difficult time in twenty twenty. So of all times that it could happen, I was very surprised. When my wife got the call about two of our kids having the opportunity to attend a drone camp for a week. I wasn't sure how it would go. I wasn't sure how they were going to pull it off safely for the kids. But it was something I think my children needed and would be a great opportunity for them to learn something new. It was a great experience that my kids really love. When the kids arrived, they did temperature checks and the kids had masks and gloves on the entire time. So I felt that they did a great job with safety. As far as content, my son was very excited that he flew his first drone. And asked when he could buy him one, so he could practice it at home. All in all, it was an incredible camp. And one of the things that they stressed to the children is that you can become a licensed drone pilot at the age of thirteen. And you can be employed as a drone pilot at the age of sixteen. And so it was a wonderful experience. So Hampton City Schools, thank you for allowing. How to be anxious to be a part of it.
So on behalf of the summer school coordinators, we appreciate the opportunity to share our experiences. And we thank the Hampton School Board members for their time. We know that behind every amazing program stands an even more amazing leader. None of this could have been possible without the support of our district leadership team. So a special thanks goes out to Dr. Owens, Dr. Haynes, Dr. Stapleton, and Anne Bain, who trusted us with a vision. And allowed us the opportunity to lead these programs. We are grateful to our teachers, support staff, and our administrative interns who are by our side along the way. This concludes our presentation and we are more than happy to entertain any questions the board may have for our team in the summer virtual learning, learning programs at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Lockett. Uh, do I have, let's see, do I have any board members that have any questions or comments? You may have to speak up since I don't see your faces on my screen.
This is Tina Banks Gray.
Okay, Ms. Banks Gray.
Hey, y'all. Wow, what an impressive presentation. So Dr. Owens, Dr. Haynes, uh, Mr. Rogers, and your team members. Wow, that's absolutely amazing. Let me start off with a round of applause to you all. Um, the Summer Learning twenty twenty, the uh Stream Program, the Tuskegee Drone. Um, camp was absolutely amazing. I'm blown away. Um, the collective enrollment was phenomenal. And just job well done, you guys. What a way to stay innovative and meet the needs of our young people during a pandemic. Job well done.
Thank you, Ms. Banks Gray. Any other comments from board members? Questions?
Hey, Chairman, this is, um, Jason.
Mr. Samuels, yes.
Hey, I have a, a question for, um, I believe it's for the middle school, Mr. Jones. But first of all, I want to say phenomenal report. I, 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 um. To piggyback on Ms. Banks Gray enthusiasm, I am, I was so enthused about, especially about the drone. Experience. And, um, so I, I'm gonna leave my drone comments at a, at later. But I have one question as it relates to the middle school. It was shared that the middle school experience. Uh, weeks went from four to six. Is there a reason or purpose to re, it was extended to six weeks?
Mr. Jones, you want to address that?
Be honest with you, I'm not certain, Mr. Samuels. Um, that's the direction that was given uh by the division leadership team. And so when they came to us, it was one of those things that Mrs. Poole and myself, we looked at it and we said, wow, six weeks. I said, okay. Um, and so when we looked at that, the thing we did was we communicated with Dr. Sito and Dr. Birdwright. And just asked them, you know, extending that, considering that it's two sessions, ninety minutes a day, you know, they could be overwhelmed and overworked. Uh, and so Dr. Sito and Doctor, and Dr. Birdright just came together and did the best to develop, engage in resources and activities. Um, I honestly couldn't tell you why it was extended outside of something and what I, what I, what I thought it was and what I said when parents asked me. I said, well, this is an opportunity to avoid that loss of learning or that summer slide. I said, so when looking at that, while it may be that ninety minutes, just consider the fact that they're, they're never off. They're always on. And they're providing an opportunity to be engaged just around the clock. So like I said, you, you, you could have looked at it or we could have looked at it and said, well, you know. We may be overworking them or overwhelming them, but at the same time, we're keeping them engaged. And, and most of those students who attended summer school or the virtual summers, summer learning, they needed it. You know, they were the ones we couldn't afford to lose. Um, they were the ones we couldn't have with those learning gaps and those losses of learning. So I, I will defer to Dr. Owens, who may have more insight, but that, that's what I gathered from it, Mrs. Poole and myself.
You actually nailed it, Mr. Jones. Um, also, uh, Mr. Samuels, just looking at the impact that shutting school down in March. Really had on our students. And because we were trying to think outside the box, you know, we didn't have to limit our time to sixteen days. Because we didn't have any projects that were going on in the building that would disrupt, you know, cleaning or maintenance. So we said, why not extend that opportunity to students? For an additional two weeks. And I think it paid off looking at the results of the students, um, the gains that they made, so.
And, and, and Dr. Owens and, uh, Mr. James, thank you so much for, um, pouring into our babies. And, and because that was one of my concern when we abruptly closed on March the thirteenth. That we were gonna have this slide, um, and, and decrease in, 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 in teaching and learning. So I'm, I'm glad that was able to be, be embedded in the summer program where we extended beyond the four weeks. So, um, thank you so much for, for, um, allowing that additional, um, two additional weeks on Dr. Owens. So, so my next comment is now with Dr. Um, Richardson about the drone program. And Dr. Richardson, I just want to share with you that, uh, that it was just such a great opportunity. For our children, especially our minority children, to be exposed to this drone technology. And I am hoping that we can explore expanding, um, this program and opportunity. The reason why I am saying this is because Thomas Nelson Community College has a drone program. And they work closely with the Hampton Police Department, um, to train. Police officers and, um, students how to operate these drones. So I'm hoping that this, uh. Opportunities or program just doesn't. So I'm hoping that this, uh, um, opportunities or program just doesn't end this summer. I'm hoping that we can take, take, uh, um, take advantage of the resources. That are within our community, especially at Thomas Nelson Community College. So kudos and thank you so much for allowing those twelve children, although it was for six students. That you advocated for additional six students to participate. So great work, Dr. Richardson.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cherry, I see you raised your hand.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say to this, to this entire team that. You know, the summer learning program for Hampton City Schools, at least in the last five years. Has always received kudos, not only locally, but statewide. But to have the kind of impact that you've had in a summer learning program during a pandemic. Speaks volumes. So I think you all deserve a, a, a big round of applause and pat yourselves on the back. And I do know, Ms. Richardson, regarding the drone program. I have, um, a friend who is connected with a family of a Tuskegee Airmen. And they are still talking about the impact of this. So thank you for reaching out to the community to make sure that. We also have all of these experiences for our children. Because based on what I'm seeing, we didn't drop a thing. All the boxes were checked plus. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Any other board members? I have to speak up. I'm scrolling through your faces, but, okay. If not, um, I want to thank all the presenters, uh, Dr. Owens, Ms. Goode, Mr. Jones, Ms. Poole. Ms. Lockett, Ms. Mon, Mr. Rogers, uh, Ms. Brown Davis. Uh, Ms. Ackerman Arms, Ms. Canny. Dr. Richardson and the team members that, uh, helped you this summer. Some of whom I think are actually on the Zoom with us as well this evening. So. Thank you to all of you. You did a great job presenting. Um, definitely Hampton continues to lead the way with summer learning. So I appreciate that very much. Okay, uh, back to you, Dr. Smith.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kilgore. At this time, we'll have our staffing update. Uh, Ms. Robin Ruth, our Executive Director for Human Resources. Uh, will provide, uh, the staffing update, followed by, um, Business and Operations. The financial report by Ms. Brittany Dorch, our Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And I remembered to take myself off mute this time. Um, I am happy to let you know that, uh, we are at, uh, ninety nine point two percent staffed. Uh, we still have twelve vacancies, uh, that we are working to fill. Um, but I do want to let you know that, uh, we have plans for all of the, the classes. Uh, and we are taking the opportunity to be creative in some of our, our staffing and taking advantage of. Um, working in a, a virtual setting.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Uh, do I have any questions from board members? Yes, Dr. Woodhouse.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Uh, just was wondering, the twelve vacancies that we have. Um, could you give us some information on what those positions are that are still open?
Absolutely. Uh, we've got, uh, surprisingly, uh, the vast majority of the positions are in language arts. Which is not something that's happened recently. Um, we have two math openings. Um, and then a handful of CTE in, in various different areas that, to support the academies.
Interesting. Any other board members? Yes, Dr. Mason.
Just real quick, um, I know with this, you know, with the virtual learning and stuff like that with, and staffing and everything is pretty challenging now. How, how's the staffing at, um, the alternative program like Bridgeport? How, how is that going?
Uh, they are fully staffed. Um, they do have students that will be getting, uh, be there in the beginning of the school year. And, um, we may be, uh, for those classes that are, um. Not, do not have students at the moment, we may be borrowing some of their teachers. Um, but they are, they are fully staffed at the Alternative Learning Center as of today.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members? Yes, Dr. Woodhouse.
I'm sorry, uh, but thank you so much, uh, Mr. Chair. You did mention the academies of Hampton. I'm wondering if we are having any, um, problems. Uh, uh, because of the virtual learning that we are, that we are experiencing now. Um, do we need less instructors or more instructors for the academies? Or, or are we just, uh, at a situation where we just maintain what we have?
Um, we have added some teachers, uh, but that is a programmatic addition. It's not, it is not in any way related to the, the pandemic. It's just, you know, as we add courses to the academy, we are adding instructors. Um, I, I don't think that the, the pandemic is adding to. The difficulty in finding some of the instructors. It's just a matter, because they have to have both the. Um, credentials for their occupation and the credentials to teach. So sometimes it's a, it's, they're just harder to find. But all of our students will be covered.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else? All right. Then we will move on to our Business Operations Finance Report from Ms. Dorch.
Good evening, Chairman Kilgore, Vice Chair, Dr. Woodhouse, School Board Members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton Community. Um, tonight I will present the June twenty twenty Board Report. Um, the June Report is a cumulative. Report for all of the months during the school year. So our cumulative revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty totaled two hundred and thirteen point six million dollars. Our expenditures and encumbrances totaled two hundred and twelve point seven million dollars. Both were approximately around four percent higher when compared to the previous fiscal year. Included in the June Report is an additional schedule. That shows the amount of funds for fiscal year nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, that we are requesting for carry forward from City Council. And included in those carry forward funds are approximately two point five million of additional revenue from state and other revenue sources. Mainly as a result of the final March thirty first ADM versus our budgeted March thirty first ADM. And additional funds around sales tax and supplemental lottery payments. As well as additional revenue over what we budgeted for pharmacy, print shop, and Medicaid. These additional funds, we did not have them re-appropriated, nor did we spend them prior to June thirtieth. Due to the uncertainty around the pandemic and where our final revenues would be. As presented in previous, um, months' board reports in prior school year. And we discussed that based on our final date payment, that we would then submit a request to City Council. So based on this June Report, there is a draft resolution to increase our appropriation by these additional funds. And we are recommending or asking the school board to take action tonight to approve this submission to City Council. Additionally, within the board report, there is a draft resolution for the reappropriation. Of funds to City Council. Um, this would include the additional funds that were previously discussed. As well as unexpendant appropriations as a result of the school closure back in March of twenty twenty. For the re-appropriated funds, um, first, we would utilize any state funds that were unspent for our early reading initiative. And SOL algebra readiness programs as required by the state. We will put those funds back into those programs. Additionally, the remaining funds, we would set aside to offset any revenue shortfalls. That we may incur in this current fiscal year. Lastly, in the event that those revenue reductions do not materialize. We would then use a phased-in approach to utilize those funds for one-time instructional and operational expenditures. As funds are released, we will communicate to the school board. Included in the report, you also have the transfers to and from the technology classification. As well as for reference, the June twenty twenty cross categorical transfers that were previously approved. During the months of July through September, within the Finance Department. We go through a process called financial reporting and we also have our external audit of our last year's results. Therefore, in the event there are any changes based on this process, we will communicate those to the school board as well. This concludes the June twenty twenty report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorch. Do I have any questions from board members about the finance report? All right. Thank you very much. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and, uh, members of the board. Uh, that concludes Superintendent Sack's reports.
Thank you very much. All right, we now move on to hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Powers, I believe you have one that you intend to read.
Yes, I do. This is from Crystal Kleiber, um, residing at eighteen Margaret Drive in Hampton. I would, my name is Crystal Kleiber and I have two children in HCS. First, let me begin by saying that I am proud of Hampton City Schools. Under Dr. Smith's leadership, our city schools were ahead of the game. And even though there were issues for the most part, given the circumstances. All that could be done in the short time in March to make the changes was done. The one-to-one initiative was a saving grace for many. While I understand why we are opening virtually, I am asking that the metrics and numbers be reevaluated to open for hybrid learning. So we can build back to the five-day-a-week goal. I feel that if we wait until November ninth, the decision will be to remain virtual due to holiday breaks. And due to the impending fear of flu season. I believe our school system could at least get the hybrid rolling here. This nine weeks for families who have voted for that option. If the teachers are teaching the Zoom daily, they can continue to do that even if the class is in the room. On hybrid because we are teaching the same children. If the set that is learning on Monday from home comes in on Tuesday. They would be getting the same information either way, so no one is missing out on instruction. This also would be a great way this semester through the holidays for children who aren't feeling up to par. And need to stay home for a day to be able to do so without feeling like they are missing anything. They could continue to be on Zoom into the class without getting an absence for not feeling well. Or for having a seasonal cold, allergy spell, or a stomach ache. COVID nineteen numbers are down. If I remember correctly, there was a certain percentage point at which the VDOE was comfortable opening in all schools. And our city is now near that number. Furthermore, the CDC reclassified the data from the past few months. And it shows that only six percent of deaths were directly related to COVID nineteen. And the other ninety-four was due to underlying conditions and other respiratory issues. We now know who the people are that really need our help. And it will make it easier to determine that at-risk population within our school buildings as well. Certain classes need to be in person. Band students and core students are going to hit the hardest with this all-virtual environment. The arts need to be supported and encouraged during this challenging time. Many children thrive in the arts. It is their fun, their outlet, their mental health medicine. Please, please help us get back into the environment where these kids don't miss out on this. The decision to go all virtual has challenged all of us working families. Fifty to sixty years ago, both parents were not working. Moms were not a leader in the workforce as they are today. There were fewer single parents. Our world and our economic system do not leave us having the option to just quit our jobs and come home. While most companies are trying their best to help accommodate this new challenge, there's only so much that can be done. A parent working from home cannot work. And they are constantly having to help the child with virtual learning. A parent not working from home is not completely accessible to their children when Zoom kicks them off or when the internet goes down, et cetera. If the Zooms were recorded and the kids had to watch daily. At times that work for the families, I may have a different opinion. While my children are old enough to stay home, I still not, I still. Don't want that for them to be home alone all day trying to learn while, while I am at work. While as an adult, sometimes virtual courses are an option. I have had, and it's not one that I think children need. Adults can pick and choose class times that work around their schedule. Our children aren't being given that option. Please let us families and taxpayers and stakeholders have a choice in this return-to-school environment. Please give us the available virtual options so that families who want one hundred percent can stay virtual. But give other families who are comfortable a choice to come back to the building. Please give our students and families grace to continue to Zoom on a sick day. Instead of missing out on work when they do come back as well. A hybrid is better than nothing at all. Children not only need to learn the academics, but the social aspect of school is so important to so many. There are so many mental and social reasons for getting our kids back to school. You all know them. That is why you are members of the school board and professionals in education. You know the needs for the kids. Please consider these in relation to the COVID metrics and help our families. Get back to some type of normal, even if it's new. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. We now move on to deliberation section of our meeting. Um, I will read through each of these individually. And if you have a deliberative comment, uh, please wave at me and we will deliberate. So the first action or first item is five point zero one. Revision of School Board Policy JHFD Student Automobile Use, Skateboard Use, and Bike Helmet Safety. Is there any deliberative comments? All right. Next item is five point zero two. Revision of School Board Policy JGDAA. Student Suspension Make-Up Work Procedures. Any comments? All right. Next item is five point zero three. Revision of School Board Policy JIA Student Recognitions. Any comments? All right. Next item is five point zero four. Revision of School Board Policy JG. Teacher Removal of Students from an Instructional Setting. Any comments? Right? Next item is five point zero five. Revision of School Board Policy IJ Guidance and Counseling Program. Any comments? All right. Next item, five point zero six. Revision of School Board Policy JECA Admission of Resident Children. Any comments? All right. Next item is five point zero seven. Revision of School Board Policy JFCI Student Drug Abuse. Any comments? Right? And the final item is five point zero eight. Revision of School Board Policy JFCL Search and Seizure. Any comments? All right. Fantastic. We will now move on to items for action. The first item is the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Revised Fund Fifty Budget. Do I have a motion to approve the FY twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Revised Fund Fifty Budget?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let's see. That was Dr. Woodhouse or?
Mr. Samuels.
Mr. Samuels first are moved and Ms. Banks Gray seconded. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Powers, will you call the vote?
Dr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Samuels?
Hi.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Hi.
Ms. LaPonja?
Hi.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Hi.
Ms. Cherry?
Hi.
Mr. Kilgore?
I have a statement to read before I vote. As a member of the school board of the City of Hampton, Virginia. I acknowledge that I have an interest in the revision of the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Revised Fund Fifty Budget. Because my wife is an employee of Hampton City Schools. because my wife is an employee of Hampton City Schools. However, I believe I am able to participate in the vote on the budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. My vote is aye. Motion carries. Our next item is, our next two items are school board policies. 6.02 is Revision of School Board Policy GCBDA Sick Leave, and item 6.03 is Revision of School Board Policy EFB Food Services. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Are you moving to approve these two items as a block?
Yes, sir, as a block.
Okay, and the second was from?
Cherry.
Cherry, okay, have a motion from Dr. Woodhouse to approve them as a block and a second from Ms. Cherry. Is there any discussions? Hearing none, Ms. Powers, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Hi.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Hi.
Ms. LaPonja?
Hi.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Hi.
Ms. Cherry?
Hi.
Dr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. Motion carries. Our next section of the meeting is deliberation first read, and I will turn it over to, I guess, Dr. Smith or Ms. Ruth.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, last, Ms. Ruth?
Yes, sir, thank you. I have much shorter policies to present to you all this evening. The first policy that we have is Policy GAD Access to Employee Social Media Accounts. This is a five-year review, and there are no recommended changes to the policy. The next policy is Policy GBED Communicable and Infectious Diseases. This policy was up for five-year review very timely. Given the topic of this policy, we only have one minor change. We have added "healthy" to the first sentence so that it reads Hampton City Schools acknowledges its responsibility for ensuring a safe and healthy environment in the schools for all students and employees. It is important to note that this GBED is also a mirror policy with GHCC in the student section. And that's the only change there. Next, we have the vacation leave policy. It is a five-year review. There are no changes. I did notice under the last revised, there is some some language that needs to be removed where it says the effective date of July 1, 2015 for all new hires. That, we will remove that. That language no longer needs to be in the policy. So you will not see that when we get, when this policy comes before you for deliberation. The next policy is Policy GCL Professional Staff Development. There is a Virginia code change, which is what led us to look at the policy, and there are also some updates to reflect current practices. And we really wanted to, yeah, our professional staff development has really focused on growth, and so the changes that are in the policy are designed to reflect growth within our professional staff as well. And then if you go to page two towards the bottom of the policy, it's in the next to last paragraph. This is where we had the actual code change. We are now required to have all teachers take a mental health first aid course. And so we have updated the language of the policy. So it's a little bit broader, and we hopefully won't have to change the policy every time the General Assembly enacts legislation to to provide additional training. We updated it so that just said educators are required to meet all specialized training requirements as set forth by state and federal regulations. So hopefully that will cover us for multiple years to come. And then the last policy that I have this evening is Policy GCN, which is our performance evaluation policy. Again, this policy is updated based on a code change. We also took the opportunity to change most of the "shall's" to "will's." You will notice on the last paragraph of page two that we have replaced "shall" with "may." It says employee evaluations may be considered when making employment recommendations to the school board. And this is reflective of the change to code. There was a change to state code on July 1st indicating that performance evaluations cannot be the sole factor in deciding on a recommendation to dismiss an employee. And while Hampton City Schools has never followed that practice, we have always used multiple sources of data when recommending any employee for dismissal. We did, you know, align our language with the revised code. And those are all of the changes to the human resources policies. I believe that Ms. Gorle has the last policy on the first read agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth. Good evening, Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair, Woodhouse, school members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. I am the last policy and I think almost the end of the meeting, so I will keep that short for you all. I have Policy JO Student Records. This is a policy that we have brought to the board the last three years as just state code continues to be updated in regard to student records. So this will be the fourth year in a row that I'm bringing you changes just based on state code changes. If we want to look at page three of the state or of the policy, excuse me, under Education Records, inadvertently, we're missing the red stripe through. We had a number three. This is not new. Number three said an employment record that is used only in relation to a student's employment by the division, and we'll make sure that that is updated by deliberation. This is actually not a change in state code. We went ahead and are recommending that we change the wording to the new wording as it matches VSBA recommendation. It's a little bit more thorough than the one sentence that we had before. If we move on to page 10, we have a new paragraph. This is a new section, and it is based on that state code change. And it basically is saying that the division can disclose or make available to a guardian ad litem in request of any information on records or records concerning a student for whom a petition for guardianship has been filed. So this is actually not a new practice for us, but it has been now put in that we have to have it in our policy so that all school divisions have that. So of course, any guardian and litem with the correct paperwork is considered that guardian and it's access to student And since we were bringing the policy to you for an update on page 13, we just made a little grammatical update instead of saying is to according with division procedures, we wanted to say in accordance with division procedures. And that is it for my policy this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gorle. Do I have any comments or questions for clarification from board members from Ms. Ruth and Ms. Gorle on the first read policies? All right. Fantastic. Thank you very much. Look forward to deliberating those next week or two weeks from now. Okay, that brings us to the next section of our meeting, which is announcements or information. First, I'll go over our upcoming meetings. The board did have a retreat scheduled for August 26th, and we needed to reschedule that. So that retreat has now been rescheduled to September 9th from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Rupert Sargent Building. Our next regular meeting will be held at 6:30 p.m. on September 16th of this month. A location to be determined. And then I will ask the superintendent if he has any information to share.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start by again thanking members of the team for all of the information that they have shared and the presentations provided. So we hope that the information was helpful and also provided context for all the great things that we're continuing to do in Hampton City Schools. Just a reminder, as mentioned by Dr. Cagiano, the return-to-school website, we would encourage family members as well as the community at large to please utilize the return-to-school website. Some excellent information there and some updates in particular as it relates to essential tools for virtual school distribution days and times, the virtual open houses, the times and so forth. The dates and times are also located on the website. The school meal program, FAQs, updates with regards to that. Registration for virtual learning workshops, as mentioned. Certainly, we have one that's scheduled for Thursday, September 3rd, 10 and 2:00 p.m. So if you'd like to participate and you have not registered, I think we have a few more slots available. And so please join us for the virtual learning workshops for families. So we're encouraging you to do that. Also, New Horizons, the FAQs, we have updated the website with information. And then a healthy and safe return-to-school guidance document. If family members have not completed the return-to-school preference survey, we're asking you to do that as soon as possible. Please contact your child's or children's particular school or schools and complete that survey. It is most helpful as we make future plans to know the preference of a particular parent or family member regarding the continuing with virtual or not. So we want to thank you in advance for all of the family members who have been able to complete the survey. Thank you for doing so. And if you've not had a chance or an opportunity to do that, we're encouraging you, please, complete that survey and help us in that regard. And then, as you know, Mr. Chairman, we're looking forward to a representative from the Hampton and Peninsula Health Districts to be present at an upcoming board meeting, at an upcoming board meeting. And hopefully that will be at the September 16th meeting, really to provide an overview of information relative to various data points and metrics that school divisions might use as they consider or look toward a future decision regarding in-person instruction. So we look forward to that particular presentation. And we find, my final comment is just to say that we're looking forward to the opening of school. And while virtual, we are asking our family members, board members, and the community at large and students, if you are following us on Facebook, to be on the lookout for several special welcome-back messages on Monday evening that will begin at 5:30 p.m. with a new special guest message every 15 minutes until 7:30 p.m. And so from what I have been told, our students and staff are in for a very special treat. So please stay tuned, and we would love also for our community to continue to follow us via Facebook Live and or via Facebook and to get that information. And as we launch this coming school year, our 2020-2021 school year, we're excited for all of the great things that will occur and for the commitment and the dedication of our staff in preparing for what I know will be an exceptional school year. And I think, Mr. Chairman, you said it well. It is an opportunity to innovate. And if any school division can do it well, I have full confidence that with the team members that we have and our teachers and support staff and family members and students and the community at large, and a strong school board and a excellent partnership with our city council and mayor and city manager, we can do it. And so I look forward to the great work and know that our administrators will continue to lead the way at the school level, but not only at the school level, but also at the division level. So thank you so very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smith. Do we have any information from board members? Yes. Mr. Samuels?
Ms. Cherry, ladies and gentlemen?
Ms. Cherry.
Okay, okay, my fellow board member, if you insist. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say thank you to the superintendent and his team for moving forward with that repository of resources we had talked about at an earlier meeting. I had a wonderful conversation with Ann Bane, who I understand is the point person on all of this, and she's been working very diligently with other members of the division leadership team and members of our community to develop what I think is just a valuable tool for parents. And based on our initial conversations, she's been able to check all the boxes in terms of what it is our parents would be looking for, and she's made it an easy-to-redocument and easy-to-access document so they don't have to click all over the place to find the information they're looking for. And that piece, I just want to say, I just think is going to be so valuable and so wonderful for our parents. She is moving forward with having conversations with board members who have very strong connections in this community and in other areas of expertise so that that document can serve as a full-service, one-stop shopping when it comes to questions that our parents may have that ultimately help our students, and that's our bottom line. So thank you again.
Yeah, and thank you for the suggestion as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Samuels?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Kilgore, for the opportunity. I just want to acknowledge Dr. Cagiano. This past week, he was a guest speaker on Hearsay with Kathy Lewis, and he highlighted some of the great work that we're doing in the school division in preparation for our virtual learning. And I spent that, I believe, 15, 20 minutes listening to him sharing that information and engaging conversation with Kathy Lewis. And I just wanted to say that he did a fantastic, phenomenal job. And I just want to say kudos to Dr. Smith for allowing him the opportunity to highlight Hampton City School. So Dr. Smith, thank you for, you know, giving John the opportunity to share our greatness.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels and Dr. Cagiano. I don't know if you have heard it or not, but the school division superintendent that followed you on the radio said Dr. Cagiano is a hard act to follow. I enjoyed that myself.
It came from our neighbors, no less. So I told, I reached out to a colleague over there and said, be sure to thank Dr. Parker for me for the comment. So thank you, Mr. Samuels as well as Mr. Kilgore.
We set it up that way.
As Dr. Smith said, he's, Dr. Smith has certainly set an example for me for the last five years. So I told him I appreciated the opportunity.
No, thank you for doing a great job.
Any other information from board members? I've got, oh, yes, Dr. Mason.
Yeah, I would just like to say to the, to the community, reminding everybody that this COVID situation is very serious. The numbers are not going down. They're actually going up. As we're starting to see the students go back to school, we're seeing large numbers of cases on our colleges and university campuses. And several of those schools are starting to send kids home. So as they come home, be mindful, you know, making sure they're getting tested, quarantining away from everyone, because what we don't want to do is for our students that have gone back to school into that environment to come home and continue to spread that throughout the community. So please take this very seriously. If you look at the numbers, you'll see people are dying, and some may say not in an alarming rate, but tell that to the family who's lost a loved one due to this disease and this, due to this virus. So just be safe out in our community because we want to make Hampton, continue to make Hampton a wonderful place to live, grow and play and have a good time. Thank you.
Well said, Dr. Mason. Anyone else? All right, I have a few informational items that I'd like to share. The first is with the actual community. I've shared this with the board members, but I want to share it with the community. Every year, our board members take on committee assignments outside of their school board responsibilities. And I wanted to go through and just provide to the community what those assignments were going to be. The first one is an assignment to the Career and Technical Education Committee, and this will be Ms. Banks Gray. This committee assists in planning and implementing and assessing career and technical education in Hampton City Schools. The next one is the Town and Gown Committee, and that will be filled by Dr. Mason. This committee works to facilitate communication and relationships between the City of Hampton, Hampton University, Thomas Nelson Community College, Hampton City Schools, and Hampton Businesses. The next is the The next is the New Horizons Board of Trustees and Dr. Woodhouse will be continuing in that role. The New Horizons is owned and operated by six peninsula school divisions, Gloucester, Hampton, Newport News, Pecos, and Williamsburg, James City County, and York. And this board helps steer and organize toward a sustainable future for New Horizons. The next one is the W H R O Hampton Roads Educational Telecommunications Association Education Advisory Committee. This will be Ms. SeFong's duty. And the Hampton Roads Educational Telecommunications Association includes nineteen school divisions throughout the Hampton Roads area who all work together to own and operate W H R O. Their leadership and guidance continues to keep W H R O on the forefront of education. I will be continuing in the role of the Virginia School Board Association Voting Delegate. And in that role, local school boards are involved with every step of the V S B A legislative efforts. Once the legislative committee has identified policies and positions to recommend to the Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors, they are voted on by the delegates at the delegate assembly at our annual convention. The next committee is the Advocacy Institute for the Federal Relations Network. That's F R N is the acronym we use. And that will be Mr. Samuels this year. The F R N is the National School Board Association's core grassroots network. It provides an opportunity for local board members to be engaged with their members of Congress as they advocate for public education. In addition, members receive vital information throughout the year concerning federal legislation and actions as well as share calls to action with fellow board members. And then the final one we have is the, the Academies of Hampton Steering Committee. And Ms. Cherry will be continuing in that role. The Academies of Hampton Steering Committee is the key leadership team within the Academies of Hampton's governance structure. It is responsible for leading the transformation of Hampton High Schools and ensuring attainment of planned outcomes. The other thing I wanted to share with board members was that your vice chair, Dr. Woodhouse and myself, attended Virginia School Board Association orientation for new chairs and vice chairs this week. And we went over lots of stuff, parliamentarian rules. And if you've, if you've ever listened to a professional parliamentarian, oh my gosh, that's quite the event. We also had training in communications, finance, roles and responsibility, and legal and policy issues. And they asked a very interesting question when we started the training. They asked, how do you think the role of the chair and the vice chair has changed with COVID nineteen? And there were probably thirty-five or so other chairs and vice chairs from across the state. And it was really interesting to hear their perspective on things. But the other thing that I took away from the training was we are very blessed in Hampton. We do not deal with some of the issues that other boards deal with. We are a high-functioning, effective, and respectful board. And it's just great to be part of this board. And then the final thing is that I wanted to, along with what Dr. Smith said, just to thank the teachers and the staff. As we get ready to start the school year, this will be our last chance to say something to them before school starts. I know they have been learning a tremendous amount about technology. They have been doing a tremendous amount of professional development. They've been reaching out, as Dr. Cagiano's presentation said, with efforts to set up one-on-one Zoom meetings with parents. And that is a very difficult task in and of itself. And so anyway, I, you know, one of the takeaways from your presentation, Dr. Cagiano, was the positive intent and grace. And so I kind of wanted to end with that in saying that that's a, that's a two-way street and I hope everybody shares that. So with that, I did want to thank Ms. Bowers and Mr. Foley for yet another effective visual or virtual Zoom meeting. And I also wanted to thank all the D L T members that joined us this evening. So anyway, with that, this meeting is adjourned.